Will everybody test their mics for me? Yeah. You guys starting to help you?
Hello, hello?
That's the perfect little tester.
Taylor.
Really?
Yes.
So I'll call the city council work session on October fifteenth, twenty twenty five to order. First, room. Mayor Smith, you're. Deborah Adams, here. Aaron Hanson.
Here.
Casey Johnson.
Here.
Mike Mickelson, which absent, Wendy Rainey, here. Kathy Sherman is absent, Dave Zastro.
Here.
That's the former council.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight's um work session is a budget work session, the um work session topic is the fiscal year twenty six budget, general fund revenues and expenses. Um, we have uh not only from city manager, we've got a draft, a general fund budget and some uh a breakdown of uh order review pie chart of the breakdown of expenses showing personnel, operating other entities and bonds, or spending our funds. So I'm gonna let the city manager introduce the work session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's great to see everybody here, um appreciating you guys engaging in this important conversation. Um, everybody, all the entities that are discussed in this work session are important to the community as well as the city was important to the community. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we all have a role in the community. Um, and the city has their core responsibilities to take care of some things. So we've been working um hard to be good stewards of the funds, ensuring that we live within our hot, our projected uh fiscal year twenty six revenues. And being able to provide our core services to our community is a fundamental obligation. And we need to figure out how we can do that with our available resources. And then I just wanted to take one minute and just do a cut, just let people know that, you know, we have been working and reducing since twenty twenty three, since twenty twenty three, we have not filled seven full-time positions. Um, we've eliminated all them quest increases in operational expenses for the fiscal year twenty six. Roll back to the twenty five budgeted amount and cut ten percent off of that. Um, for three hundred thirty-six thousand dollar reduction. Um, even if all of the proposed cuts occur, we'll still have a two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar deficit that the city will have to figure out how to handle. So it is a very um important conversation right now. And um I think with that, we uh we said that the the representatives from the entities that come up and talk, and we were gonna do I think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and um then after that, we'll come back into our budget work session, well, we'll still be in our budget work session, but we'll come back to this setup at the table. So let's see, whoever wants to go first. Kathy. Nicole is on the phone. Is Nicole on there? She's on the phone. Nicole, do you wanna go uh first?
Sure, thank you. Um. Nicole Songar, Cordova Family Resource Center, twelve fifteen Lake Avenue. Madam Mayor and members of city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here to address the proposed cuts to all outside entities funding to zero in the city budget. While I fully understand the challenges the city is currently facing, I would like to share a significant impact that the twenty thousand dollar reduction could have on the family resource center as well as on the city and the community we all serve. CFRC has been grateful for the city's longstanding light item support, which has been instrumental in helping us meet local needs for more than three decades. Over the years, city funds have been used in many ways to help pay rent and maintain a safe, accessible location for service delivery, to cover fuel and utility expenses, and to respond to unexpected expenses. More recently, the support has been able to allow CFRC to leverage additional grant funds to, by demonstrating strong local investments. CFRC operates primarily through three major funding sources, the Council on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Victim Service Grant, the Prevention Grant, and HUD, Basic Homeless Assistance Program. Historically, CDVSA grants required a ten percent local match, which was temporarily lifted during the COVID period. However, those requirements have now returned at a fifteen percent match. The Prevention Grant received is at a hundred and fifty-one thousand eight-ten, requiring a fifteen thousand one-eighty-one match. Victim Service Grant is two forty-three, seven forty-five. And if funding level remain the same in FY twenty seven, the fifteen percent required match will be a thirty-six, five sixty-one. CFRC would need to come up with a total of fifty-one thousand seven forty-two, seventy-five for fiscal year twenty seven. Loss of the city contributions could jeopardize CFRC's ability to meet these required matches, putting critical funding streams and services they sustain at risk of being withdrawn from Cordova. I could also, it could also reduce CFRC's competitiveness for future grants as local government support is often viewed by funders as a key indicator of community commitment and organizational stability. The city investments allow CFRC to meet required matches and demonstrate community partnerships. While some of the match can be met through in-kind, a portion should and must be met by city cash. City roles, that's very vital. Each city dollar not only sustains essential services, but also serves as a catalyst unlocking additional funds and expanding the reach for critical programs throughout Cordova. Without city support, Cordova Family Resource Center will be forced to as well make some difficult decisions on the services that we can continue to provide. We will maintain our core domestic violence and sexual assault services and most likely eliminate some and reduce some of the programs that don't directly tie to those funding streams, such as assistance with public service benefits, unemployment, job center services, senior and disability resource navigation, supervised visitation for outside domestic violence cases, and other community-based advocacy services. All these programs CFRC provides outside of the DVSA realm to fill critical service gaps in the community, often to some of those most vulnerable populations. If those programs were left lost, the city may ultimately bear the burden of filling those gaps. Without CFRC's assistance, city staff could find themselves fielding requests to help with public assistance applications, heating applications, WIC, childcare, social security disability, social security income, senior benefits, housing, weatherization, legal advocacy unrelated to domestic violence and sexual assault, all services that residents depend on daily. In closing, I ask you to consider not only what this twenty thousand dollars represents to CFRC, but what it represents to Cordova as a whole, a continued partnership to ensure safety, stability, and access to vital resources for our residents. Your support is not just a light item, it's a reflection on our shared commitment to the well-being of every person who calls Cordova home. Thank you for your time and your continued smart to, support to our community.
Thanks, Nicole. And yeah, the Community Resource Center fills an enormous gap in our community and the list of services that you all provide, it's always kind of mind-boggling, all the different um needs that you meet. So thank you for doing that. Yeah.
Me? Sure.
We are, yeah, sticking to five minutes and.
You don't trust me?
Be fair to everyone.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor, council members, um and community members that are here. Thanks for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Um, the role that you play in this community is so important and I'm really grateful for the time that and energy that you put into making these tough decisions. I don't envy them at all. Um, my name is Kathy Renfell, three oh eight Brilla Room. I'm here representing the Court of a Chamber of Commerce and also the hundreds of local businesses, workers, and families who rely on a strong local economy and a vibrant community to survive. The city's proposal to cut the chamber's annual funding uh from seventy thousand zero would end a decades-long partnership that delivers measurable essential value to Cordova. This isn't about a large budget item in the context of the city's overall budget. And considering the cost of placing this work with staff or contractors, seventy thousand dollars is minimal, but the loss would have enormous consequences for the Court of the Chamber and in turn for the local economy, tourism management, and community life. There, the city's allocation to the chamber shouldn't be seen as a charitable donation, but rather a resource that allows us to provide professional services that fulfill vital responsibilities in the community. Managing tourism and visitor services, providing public information to residents and visitors, marketing Cordova as a destination, supporting small businesses and entrepreneurs. These are responsibilities that every community has. And um if this funding is eliminated, those functions don't just disappear. They would simply have to shift to someone else. And the city could choose to assign these tasks to one of their own staff or contract with someone else to manage tourism communications, market our destination to visitors, recruit tour meeting groups, update visitor materials, supporting events, compile business information to serve this goal. There are, these are ongoing duties in every community with any size of visitor economy. And the only question is how they're delivered and who delivers them. Cordova's model, partnering with the Court of a Chamber, which is Cordova's destination marketing organization, DMO, has proven to be the most cost-effective and locally responsive way to achieve these goals. Across Alaska, municipalities recognize that destination marketing and visitor services are city responsibilities, and each community chooses either to perform this work with state staff or to contract and fund their local chamber or destination marketing or organization, DMO, to do this on their behalf. Examples include Bellbees, who contributes eighty-five percent of its accommodation tax directly to its DMO. Anchorage and Fairbanks, obviously of different scale than us, but still follow the same pattern. Anchorage, one-third of its bed tax to its DMO. Fairbanks, fifty, sixty-five percent of its bed tax to its DMO. Haynes, a little closer to our scale. They dedicate one percent of total sales tax revenue to an internal department within the city and borough. Um, Wrangle, they allocate a hundred percent of um their bed tax to fund an internal tourism and visitor services department. They don't have our size. Kodiak, closer to our size, their DMO receives roughly sixty-two percent. Um, and on Alaska, roughly forty-six percent. Um, methodologies and percentages vary, but the pattern remains the same. Most Alaskan communities with any visitor economy fund their visitor and destination marketing either internally or to an external DMO or chamber partner. Cordova already has a dedicated funding mechanism available, the Accommodation and Vehicle Rental Surtax. Um, this was created uh for this purpose. I've spoken to several people who were on council at the time that this co, the surtax was, was put into place and um I asked the city for records to, to verify this and they, they were not able to produce anything for me. They said that there was a a purge uh during that time where they don't have the records. But uh we're, we're asking that the city um align Cordova's model with the rest of Alaska by considering dedicating a percentage of that surtax to the work that it was designed to fund. Uh, another benefit there would be that it's tying um our, our performance um to these, these key indicators that tell us that uh things are going in the direction that we want. Sustainable development um for tourism is, would be, um, I think the community, we've done a lot of outreach and they all agree that we want a lot of independent travelers here. And I think the accommodation um tax is a great way to measure that. Um, we do also have a little bit of expedition cruise problem here. Um, there is, there is possibly looking at that port fee as well as a way to increase a little bit of revenue there. But every dollar that the city invests in the chamber, it's matched and multiplied to one. Your memberships, sponsorships, and events, and we deliver outcomes that the city has yet to achieve internal, internally from economic development. And we're all working together on these goals. One person can't do it alone and we're your partner to try to um really manage our tourism in a sustainable way so that we um can be proactive in our funding development and not reactive like a lot of other communities in Cordova. Oh, that went really fast. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Paula.
I guess, I guess you were right about the trust rate.
Enough with the ball.
Good evening, and now, so I see super creative schools. If I do have any uh time left, that five minutes, I'd like to yield it to, back to Kathy.
No.
Sorry. Um, I can't speak to you tonight regarding any great level of details as to what the, the two hundred dollar, uh, two hundred thousand dollar less compared to this year that, that the, the city has provided us. Um, but, but one thing that I can say is that um, you know, there are more unknowns in a school budget at this time of year than, than knows. Um, we do know that um the governor's veto override by the legislature that um we had more in the base student allocation um than what we have. So that's a great known to have. We can project out um based on some student enrollment what uh our state entitlement um might be. Um, but I guess I would just offer that in recent years, um, and historically, the district has always made do with the revenue that it's received, whether that was from the city or from the state um or federal sources. But this year, for example, um, you know, we had to make some decisions around um our budget. And uh, you know, we're in need of a, another high school teacher. Um, we've had a position until there for two years and we've uh made the decision not to fill that based on our, our fiscal picture. Um, elementary teacher is another position that we didn't necessarily fill this year. Um, we've been creative in trying to manage the staff with the resources that we have. So this year we have a three, grade five, six combination classes. So rather than having two fourth grade and uh, excuse me, two fifth grade and two sixth grade classes, we're able to kind of combine those classes. It's not unheard of, it's not unusual to do, but um that was one of the efforts that we made um to kind of work within our means. Um, we reduced um activities travel this year to one paid activity, uh, one trip per group, uh, whether that's a team or a student group, um and then provided funds for um regional and state travel. So if students want to travel beyond that moment, um they need to fundraise and, and those resources primarily come um from the community. We also have um gone aggressively after a number of grants. Um, with the district received a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant um this year. Um, while that money is not uh intended to be used for operations, general operations, and we have to be very specific um to how that's used. But that's a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant each year for the next five years. So we'll be able to do um quite a bit of uh intervention and support services for students um using those grant funds. We've also um had staff uh sort of um consulted out into other districts um for a number of uh different things, whether it's maintenance or food service. Um, we've written some contracts um with other districts to provide support um for some of their operations. So we're actively working at trying to generate revenue for the district. Um, given, you know, we're not a business and we can't necessarily sell a product. Um, so we're, we're extremely working hard within our means to, to try to meet the needs of students. So I think um with that, you know, we definitely appreciate the position that the council finds itself in, um trying to make hard decisions. Um, our school board will be in that same position uh come March, April, May, um to be making some of those hard decisions as well based on what the revenue looks like for us. Thank you.
I'm Andrew Sanders. I'm the resident here in Cordova over the twenty-two oh three Power Creek Road. Um, and I'm a volunteer uh medic with the fire department. First, I'd like to say thank you very much to the support that the council has continued to show the fire department and the support that I see in the proposed budget. I also would like to um lend my voice to um other comments that the fire department may make tonight, but actually what I would like to use my time to discuss is um when I look at these proposed cuts that, some of which will affect some of the most vulnerable people in our community. I would like to encourage the city to consider reducing the senior property tax exemption. Um, under that program, there is uh approximately twenty-seven point seven million dollars of assessed home value that are exempted under that program at the current mill rate. That comes out to over three hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue that's being left on the table. That revenue would be enough to cover the proposed cuts to the ski hill, the school, the family resource center, and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
So we're not very, we have a public comment. We're just we're just allowed the activities. Okay, yeah, it's just me sitting down. So um for each school district, this family resource center, the chamber, all this key.
I don't think they're represented in here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. So back to the city manager.
Yep. Um, so I, there is a handout on the table if people want to look at and match it, if you want copies. Um, we last year talked about some things we call the untouchables um during our budget. Um, and we have recreated that and added a few things. And one thing I want to say about the untouchables are, these are obviously personnel is touchable in a sense, but in here, we're leaving it as untouchable. Bond payments, you can't do those. Um, veh, vehicle leases are what we pay for the uh few, we girls, we fought overtime. Utility, heating, pre-illness, we, we gotta have that. Liability insurance, um, the school transfer is in there with a two hundred out. And then we have contracts, audit, IT, you know, a variety of different contacts, contracts. Um, but I just want to say that there's a lot of things that aren't under untouchables that cannot be eliminated. So we are at like, if you subtract the um the final line and the untouchables, so the final is a cost of operation, which is fourteen one-four. And you take the eleven away, we are at two point five, which sounds like a lot of money. But that's spread across the entire general fund, the parole, the dark people, city offices, streets, fire, police, um, library, museum. It is a lot of places um that we support for that. And there are things you just can't get rid of. So um I guess what I, I want to say a few things that we we are, I just want to clarify because I've heard a few times that maybe the, the thought was that the lease of the building was also on the table. It is not for the chamber. The building lease is not on the table for a cut. It is still being given to the chamber. So I'm just going to make that clear. Um, um, and we're not replacing these services. Um, we're just trying to keep the services that we have now. So by eliminating or cutting costs from the chamber or or family resources, we're not replacing those services. Um, so that's clear. Um, we also have a lot of unknowns. We don't know what's gonna happen. We got caught from the state for the dump of debt.
Go on, Dan.
Three hundred percent. You know, three hundred thousand, three hundred forty thousand, that could go up. We don't.
Sorry.
She'd love to be cut off.
Um, so you know, we don't know, the feds are not at this point considering rural schools. That's an eight hundred thousand dollar cut. Um, we had additional funds in the revenue in twenty-five that we don't have now, the one, one for the oil orphanage. So it's, we have lost revenue on top of. So I just want to make that clear because I'm not sure that everybody attended the revenue session last time. And um uh, but I think I would like to share, I'll come up with anything handy computer for any questions. And I guess the end goal of this meeting is, I'm understanding what you just worded, because we have to figure out what we're doing. Uh, the one thing I, that I didn't mention is we did budget the sales tax revenue lower than what was budgeted in twenty-five because we are not trajectory. By the twenty-nine, which is our next schedule work session, we will know the majority of the sales tax that's there. Yeah, so we will have a, a
Which is the last.
Which is the last. Yeah. So we'll house mostly solid numbers, there'll be some regulars coming in, but nothing that's going to make it.
So I guess I would just like to ask if council members have questions, I mean, but unless, unless there was something you wanted to lead off with, Cheryl, but just, you know, we have the um proposed revenue and expenses. Uh, and so the last work session on the first was mostly talking about revenue. So I think this is the chance to ask about expenses if people have questions about what's in the proposed budget. Unless I'm missing something. So yeah, so do folks have questions? I have a couple of questions I just wanted to um get a little bit of clarity on. Maybe they were things that were talked about and I missed it because I know I wasn't here. But there is so Finance Department has a figure that's flagged for twenty-six. Um, and I, maybe that was just.
In the memo, we kind of went over, but that's um for this work session that gets to the two seventy-seven deficit. Um, in there, a position from Finance has been cut.
Cool. Okay, right, right. I'm just, okay, every figure is higher. The, the proposed twenty-six figure is higher than twenty-five.
It's less than, yeah.
So.
Correct.
I was just, yeah.
Um.
Which maybe it's not as high as it would have been if the confluence position was in there.
Yeah, they brought it down one, it is sitting here like that.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, I understand that, you know, and
One seventy, seventy-six.
Start by saying thank you, Cheryl, for stepping up to. Position, or really pleased about that. So thank you for bringing that up.
The bottom line, finance is lower than twenty-five. Yeah. Isn't it?
In, in the round one, I was, we did. I'm looking at page seven.
Yeah, don't look at twenty-five actual.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
But the total finance.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Um, and then I was gonna also I was just gonna ask about law enforcement, so, um, which costs a lot to make sure we have, we're in good public sector.
Yes.
Um. But the salaries line item goes up and I don't know if that's because we're budgeting for trying to fill a position to keep.
All the positions have been budgeted in the past, but there are union mandated raises and increases.
I'm sorry, there what?
Union mandated raises and increases.
Okay.
And so we have to, uh, two, two percent.
Um, CPI is two point two percent for two thousand and six and then um a step increase also that's built into the contract.
Mm-hmm.
It differs between levels, but around four percent. So.
Thanks.
And also insurance.
Insurance, um, we projected a fifteen percent increase based on the information we're getting from our group.
You got a question on whether we just.
Do you have a question, whether we just, so when there are short staff and there's significantly more overtime. Than a standard solid workforce, is that also budgeted and accounted for?
It kind of trades off, like we have seen that within the police department, I'll use that as an example. They've had a couple of positions, sometimes more than a couple, that are unfilled. And so we do see an increase in overtime to cover those hours. Um, but the overall personnel section of the budget still remains. Because you lower the sales or the salaries and wages line and the overtime kind of, it increases. Usually leaving us about where we projected. Because then you have those other items that are associated with the personnel costs, like insurance and stuff. So while overtime is one and a half times wage, um, those other associated costs meet up a difference also. So they kind of balance it all around.
And just going through the list of efforts, one of those being over the last three years, not filling seven full-time positions. Those are however, category of this sector right now.
No.
They are not, none of those are. Yeah, I thank you for the FTE, he's been a super helper, see you later, but just to be fair, those are not included.
Maybe your microphone might not be though. Does everybody understand that the smaller one has the side with the FTEs? That I forgot to put in when I made this one, so this one's easier to see. But the FTEs that you had asked Cheryl to provide is on the smaller one, it's there over there.
Which is not reflected online.
Oh, well, I think I sent it to you in the email, no, what, is that what you asked?
Yeah, you said which is not reflected online. Oh, so you sent out a set.
I think I sent it in a separate email, but I can send it again to you, Casey. On the new one that you're about to receive, it often breaks out operating expenses, um, and personnel groups. In their own categories, like what was requested, we're not seeing.
Just gonna ask if you have any questions Casey, but you're muted, so I take it. You don't.
I was just going back through my emails and I didn't see.
Okay.
And again, just going back to my conversation, and hopefully you can hear me, I hope so, hopefully it don't sound too active. But, um, that personnel breakdown, I think is crucial for us. And not just us as council, but the public to see like this is the cost, this is the cost of living in Cordova. This is what it costs to have your neighbors work for the city, your friends to work for the city. Um, and those items are pseudo untouchable, but to know that if we touch those, someone's losing their job. And so I just want to make sure that's broken down versus an operational cost. Which I have some concerns about as we're taking twenty twenty five, taking it for twenty twenty six. And then cutting twenty five per, or ten percent, ten percent, right, or five percent.
Ten.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's almost a smoking mirror game, because we know next year, all the costs are going to go up. Because they went up this year, inflation's going to continue to happen. And so I'd rather see like a realistic number, even if we kept the, the twenty twenty five over twenty twenty five. And just leave it at that, because we know it's not realistic to expect that the cost of doing business is actually going to go down by ten percent. And then we'll be in the same position next year, we're getting a budget of everything was still as expensive, if not more expensive. We have tariffs, we have geopolitical unrest, there's so many things that are going on in this world. I want to make sure we're looking at a realistic budget number, so we know what we're actually asking the city of Cordova to, to fund. Whether that's funding privately, as we discussed, cutting, uh, these. Legacy funding that we've done for the chamber, for, uh, the family resource center, through the ski center, through the school. I mean, that, those funds have to come from somewhere, and so, a- again, that's my two cents on cutting operational costs.
There.
Yes.
Cheryl, can you clarify, um, what, and I see this in each department is professional services listed. And I, I'm not sure what that really means.
It's different for each department, um, professional services for the pool might be, um. Oh, I just looked at this.
Engineers, um, to help with like the cool.
Or the project, annual inspection for some departments, um, those type of things. So it differs department to department, just because our nature of business is different across all.
Some kind of contractual services.
Usually, but, um, in finance, I, I can definitely speak to that. It, it covers, especially as I'm new to this, it will cover, um, when I have to reach out and get professional assistance. Expanding my knowledge. And then also if we have a contractor that assists with our audit prep. Um, so if we utilize him in a way outside of, that's outside of that, aren't you sure?
And I would be doing that over public works, we are not engineers, and when I took that position. Um, we set up that professional development to.
Services.
Services.
Yeah.
And that one, so that we can have funds to work with engineers. We talk with engineers about water, sewer, you know, rapids permits, all those kinds of things that. An engineer knows a lot about roads, we need, you know, having support, we really have, and designs them.
Okay, is there more Cheryl that you wanted to talk through?
No, I just wanted to be able to answer questions that you guys have on, um, yeah, and kind of get the sense as Sam said. Where support is, because it really, it will tell us next steps on, like. We have to go back to the drawing board one way or the other, or it's just whether or not it's with a two hundred and seventy seven thousand deficit or higher.
There's also staff here, if anyone has a particular question.
I, I may have remembered, do we have somewhere in the budget, just a contingency fund for, for things that, that are, are unknowns? Like, um, you know, something breaks in here and the, the, the building needs a new boiler.
Most years we do, I do believe that that is a responsible way to budget in this budget. Um, for.
Is it reflected in here?
Those type of things have been cut. Um.
Or in, in streets, it's been reduced.
Yeah, so like, they used to fund, um, equipment maintenance at.
Eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars.
And, um, I don't remember off the top of my head what we dropped, what it's been reduced to, but. Yeah, so, so that. The what ifs and the things that we know do happen, stuff comes up, we have boilers that break for that, um.
Loaders that break during the.
Yeah, yeah. And those are not. Completely covered in this.
Okay, so, so we have, in this budget, we really don't have a cushion, something catastrophic happens.
Yeah.
Aside from depending on insurance, if it can be cut by insurance.
Well, depends on if it is, yeah, yeah, we do have liability insurance for. Which is a untouchable cost.
And in untouchables, Sam did, um, speak to this, but like the pool operating supplies. You can't run a pool and not have the chemicals to operate. While we didn't highlight it in the untouchable list, and it's in that two point five million, that we can kind of. Maybe find where we can adjust things. If we can't not. Have the chemicals for pool and still have people in that pool. So that untouchable list feels. A little misleading this year. Just because we have gotten down to bones.
Another question on personnel, so every department has a category for temporary employees. And they're all zeroed out right now, although one under city manager does have one for actual one twenty five, but a small amount of money. How often do you find that it seems like that's something is just to be able to catch what might pop up as a need? As a budget season goes on, you need your temporary support in some form or another. Does that happen? Do you find that something that happens often, or is that just? Or, or you need, yeah, or is that just a legacy category from?
Well, they are not all zeroed out, because there are, um, part of the center, they have to have temporary positions. We can't hire somebody both to, well, work meetings and stuff, it's just not the fee to open. So they are all zeroed out, museum and library streets, they have those.
Temporary or part-time?
Temporary.
Temporary.
Temporary position. Parks and Rec is very dependent on temporaries, um.
They're zeroed out though. Parks, parks and, parks maintenance, all year now.
Yes, um, Parks Maintenance has already, um, absorbed a maintenance position. I think one of the seventh positions that haven't been carried up, and then the temporary summer position. Was also not put into the twenty five budget, so we rolled back to twenty five. Um, it was asked for in twenty six. Um, museum, library have tents, um, I do think that we. Where, regardless of where we end up, at two seventy two, we will be going back and discussing the temporary.
For another category, it's not really, I'm going to flesh out.
Um, so, so Cheryl, we're just.
If you look at, um, sorry.
Go ahead.
If you look at the darky and the pool, their usage of temp workers this year, um. They rely heavily on it, so the amount that we have budgeted for two thousand and twenty five is going to impact. It's low enough that it's going to impact the services that they provide, um. Like, put back on pool out, um, come summer time. And, I mean, we've really tried to be creative, maybe I wasn't saying this on, saying, okay. Um, in how we achieve this, but none of them are easy.
Well, yeah, a fly bear will drop something, right, so, the cost.
Yeah. I think the other, um. My important thing is, you know, we gave a percentage to cut. Because I feel like it's important for department has to be able to determine their priorities within their own department. I don't want to tell them, well, they have to cut, although Kevin, even though he still owes me after, I told him we could not chip it up. Yeah. But, you know, those, the cuts are made by the party, has.
Although some of us may have been offered chocolate to cut things out of our budgets.
That may not create, that may be creativity Cheryl, it's just.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I think the question is, um, does the council want to. Commit to these cuts at this point, so that staff can then has sort of, knows, knows where they, knows where the marker is. Where the line is and what they have to then go back and find the additional savings for. Um. How people want to perceive, um. We've got three more work sessions scheduled between, uh, well, one for the end of this month and two in November.
We have to do enterprise funds in. Um, and I mean, I'll give those heads up, we will be looking at these state all increases. Um, I don't know about enterprise funds, we haven't had that discussion, it's by general funds.
Um, ma'am, your question. Do we have an accurate and, um, current raw fish tax number yet? I, and the reason I ask is because, um, people I know who've been crewmen have just gotten another check. For the season, in that meaning that prices have gone up. And does that roll over into our revenue as well, or no?
We don't have a fiscal year, I mean, so our fish revenue for twenty five, we did receive. And it was showing the six year, but that's for fiscal, that's for fishing season. Last year, twenty four. So we won't know.
We, we budgeted a million and we received six hundred and thirty seven thousand, so that was another revenue this year.
For fiscal year twenty five, we don't get fiscal year twenty six till this time next year. For fishing season twenty five.
Wait, you gotta explain that again, I lost you, you lost me, I'm sorry.
So, the fish tax that we received in the fiscal year we're in, so fiscal year twenty five. Were receiving the tax from the fishing season of twenty four. So in fiscal year twenty six, we will get the fish tax for fis- for fishing season twenty five, this time of year. Right before the budget, so we won't know when a solid one we're there.
And this year's was substantially lower than we budgeted.
Yes, and we did budget lower than.
What did we budget for twenty cents, or what did you put in at the revenue work set? Nine hundred thousand, nine hundred.
And we did budget lower in twenty six, and, you know, we could tweak that twenty four was a pretty poor fishing year. But it is, the state doesn't share how they do it, it's, right. So it's just something.
They're very correct.
So we have a letter going out that hopefully get more information on that.
And even I thought they passed something at the legislature about being more timely with payments also.
Right, that's probably came out in that just laid task force, yeah.
And that didn't happen this year, because we got fish facts in the week of September. I mean, they collect it in, at the end of March. That's why it's all due by the process, it's, it's going to stay.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something we can talk to our delegation about during the session, we should not let it go, but we probably shouldn't count on it.
Not America, yes, so, I mean, I think the bottom line is, basically, we have three options. We have cut staff on the city. We have cut extraneous funds that aren't baseline emergency funds, or we have rate taxes. Those are our three options, and I think this is reasonable. I would say that with the incoming lease for the chamber, um, I feel like. Cutting everything from the family resource center, she does make a valid point that not having any support from the city does make it difficult for. Grant opportunities, so I would like to see something go back to CFRC, just so that they can continue with their grant. Opportunities, um, I mean, we're, we have an income of twenty five, eight. And four thousand eight with the lease for the chamber, which is not on the table. And then, um, you know, I would like to see something go back to CFRC, just so that they continue to show. That the city is supporting them for their grant opportunities, but, I mean, they're kind of self-sufficient on the side there. I think it would help them with their opportunities, but that, other than that, I think, you know, this is realistic and. It's unfortunate, but it's what we're looking at.
But, yeah, that's kind of what I see right now too, and particularly the four entities that are taking a hit here. Three out of four have other income sources that are coming in. That's the resource center, but it starts us coming from the city specifically, that, that was the end. And, uh, if, if an additional five thousand would make all the difference in retaining or getting new grants. It seems like a small price to pay for when they provide community. So I, I would say a minimum, something around five thousand would not. So I would say a minimum, something around five thousand would not be that difficult to try to pull off. At least as a starting point.
I was thinking to keep them there, trying to make.
Yeah, yeah.
We're throwing numbers around.
The calling for strong argument, though, as you just mentioned about grant opportunities.
Yeah, no, that's my concern, is that, you know, we're not only pulling the funding from them, but we're pulling opportunity, opportunities from them, and I don't want to see that happen. Um, I think that's a really important resource for Cordova.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Kinsman.
Um, I agree with that sentiment, and I'm reluctant, and I know in the past I've had some different opinions on the chamber. I would like to see if we make any cuts to the chamber. I don't think as down to zero is the right answer, given the revenue. And we can debate, and I know it goes back and forth of actually how much of that revenue is tied to the chamber, but there's no question that some of the surtax revenue comes from the chamber directly. That's, that's absolutely a thing. Um, if we do make a cut, and for me, if we're saying half, I I can support half, unfortunately. What I would want to see moving forward in the future is our MOU adjusted to that whatever our surtax is a percentage of that goes to funding the chamber. I I really appreciate that and like that foresight. Um, Kathy and bringing that up, I think that's great, whatever that number is, I mean, I don't know that anything less than fifty percent would probably be too crazy, but especially looking at revenue from, uh, this year, and I know it's still coming in. I just want, I just wanted to add that in. I'm also still very concerned, actually, in these numbers, that our, the cuts that we're making aren't realistic. I know last year we kind of inflated income, and we're toning that back this year, and now we're like, and I feel like we're inflating our cuts. And I I see both have a negative effect on where we're going to be at next year. I do appreciate that just us cutting out a lot of those federal, you know, just looking at where we're at with federal and state funding that hasn't delivered where we're at. I really appreciate that fiscal responsibility, and to me, that's what it is, fiscal responsibility, that we're looking at what hasn't come in, and let's just not plan on it. I hope that we can continue with that trajectory moving forward and and really just right-size our budget.
So I want to clarify, you are suggesting that the proposed budget of two hundred and thirty thousand for public accommodation surtax, that we reduce that by half?
I'm saying there should be some kind of percentage tied to that. And there is. And I'm not saying right now, I'm saying moving forward as we go into the twenty-seven budget, right now, we're, it's too late at this point. I'm saying as we go forward, as we start making, if we make a cut to the chamber this year, I want to make sure that we have something sustainable and substantial moving forward that they can, that we as a community can tie to their performance. What is the value and what do we think that that accommodation tax is coming from the chamber? And we, I have full confidence that between staff and the chamber, we can come up with what that percentage is. And then tie that to what we fund the chamber to. I don't think it's too, I don't think it's too far of a stretch to think that of that number, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars could be directly tied to the chamber. I could be wrong, and I'm open to it, but I I I appreciate the percentage approach to it.
So I, so I'm hearing three things, um, that I want to, uh, make sure we pin down. The first one is the Family Resource Center, and we talked about some different numbers and what we would want to put in the budget for them for this year. So I heard somewhere between five thousand and twenty. So, so I'd like to see if we can pin down a number.
We we had the in-kind with the lease for the chamber at twenty-five, was over twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
So I was thinking, you know, we've got that happening. I would keep the Family Resource Center at twenty, only because that's, that's what they're getting from us, Perry. Yeah, that was my thought, and how would, how do others feel about that? Or other questions? That's. Sandra, you want to?
I, I, again, going back to the chamber, do we, I mean, we can.
Well, wait, 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 Councilmember Kinsman, I want to stick with the Family Resource Center for just a moment, and then, yes, get back to the chamber, but we could just pin this figure down.
Can we just go between five and twenty thousand and have some?
We want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think something, but I don't.
I I feel like.
If you feel like that's something you can work with, I mean, I, when you said you want clarity, I I wasn't sure how definitive you wanted the council to be, but if you would like that.
If you're willing to support something between five thousand and twenty, whether it's five thousand or it's twenty, then I'm willing to take that range. If you're only going to support only.
That was just my first thought. I'm, I would like to see them get something, so that we can say that we support them when they're looking for grants. So I'm, I'm open to between five and twenty.
And I would be in agreement with that. I don't know if I would go to the full twenty, but, um, I'm something in that range.
Okay.
I'm with support.
Are you okay with having that range to work with?
Yes, as long as you will support what I bring back. That's the whole point of my presentation, like, I have to make some hard decisions.
Absolutely.
And so I need to understand that I come here with a budget based on these recommendations, and then we want to make more cut, you know, we want to make more money, give more money to others.
Other folks okay with that?
Yeah, sounds work.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so the chamber, um, there were two things about the chamber. One is the amount, um, that's, if we're talking about cutting seventy thousand, and did people want to? It sounds like Councilmember Kinsman is proposing, um, reducing that cut to a cut of thirty-five thousand. And then there's also the question of, um, pinning down, or, yeah, I mean, for going forward, um, looking at articulating some kind of more direct, um, what's the word, allocation, percentage, I mean, we can't, I think technically, I I just remember hearing that all the revenues go into the general fund and are not supposed to be earmarked, but we all know that the bed tax comes from tourists, and some of that money could go back to supporting, um, tourism, so. Uh, I just wanted to say that out loud, and some people understood how this works, but, um, so let's tackle the first part, the funding for this year's budget. What do people, what does the council want to see for?
I think with the in-kind, I'm fine with the cash cut, because we are still supporting the chamber by the in-kind with the rental. Um, and if you want to look at, you know, a future tied to performance, I'm fine with that, but I can tell you right now, fifty percent of the bed tax does not come from chamber programs. But I do understand, and I do remember that it was supposed to be tied to the chamber at some point, so I would definitely take a look at, you know, performance base for a future budget on that, but in my mind, I think the in-kind is, is a lot, and I'm, I think that that's, that's great, and I would, it's not a reflection on the chamber, I think the chamber does great programs, and I participate in them as a business owner, but you know, we're not, we're not talking about emotion here, we're talking about budget.
And city services.
And city services.
And city.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we have to continue to keep that in mind. Every time.
So other discussion, other comments on that?
I support, uh, Councilmember, any of that, uh, because there is some support going to them, and I would like to see where our manager comes back. The fact we have a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, our debt is still. So I'd like to see where we end up with the numbers that she has to deal with right now. You do have more meetings to throw this around, but I think for now, that's something for the manager to work with.
Other comments?
I like what Councilman Kinsman said about, you know, moving forward, that we probably do need to make, have some sort of memorandum of agreement or understanding with the chamber, so that they can anticipate and budget as well. Um, but when you have a, a, a building that's being supported by a city, um, I, you know, that's a substantial, um, contribution to their program. So I, I think I'm in the same position as Councilman Ray.
I would follow, Ray, um, we have a substantial amount of money that still has to be accounted for. And kind of ran out of the, thanks for the job.
Okay.
Yeah. Support that.
Thanks. Councilmember Kinsman, did you want to? I'll look on that at all.
So if I'm looking at the in-kind correctly, we're saying it's about twenty-five thousand dollars. That is.
Oh, and we also pay their utilities and heating oil, and we maintain the building. So, although I guess you don't get heating oil anymore, it's propane.
That is in facility utilities, they just budgeted the.
It's propane, nice, they said. Anyway, we do pay their, there's also that other portion of the.
So you pay the thirty, hundred thirty thousand, I think. Thirty thousand six hundred, right, is what comes to.
Okay, that's what I was saying, thirty, thirty thousand. Um, I just want to put it out again. And I feel strongly that the chamber brings more than thirty thousand dollars into our community. Um, but, uh, I can get behind a cut if knowing that for really twenty-seven, there's going to be some kind of direct-ish tie, something that's traceable. I know we've had in the past, the MOUs have called out, like, if they bring some, maybe so many people, these are untangible things, but if we can tie it to a tax number that we have, that we can see, we have the data, that's a, that's a raw number. Um, and and this is also calling on the, uh, chamber and Kathy especially to to cut, to help and and negotiate what that number is. This is negotiation at some point, like what, what is the percentage that the chamber's bringing in? Um, uh, this isn't, yeah, that's. I know we're in a difficult spot, but that's really the way I can see supporting that, cutting that cut to the chamber is if we have the opportunity to do something that's really sustainable for the future. Because this yo-yo for any business model is not sustainable, they'll lose the chamber, and that is not okay. That's not okay for us to lose the chamber, and lose services, but everyone's making cuts and losing services. Um, and and hopefully, the city of Cordova, the residents, the residents are listening and watching and paying attention, and and they can make their voice heard as well.
Thank you. Russian, what is the seven thousand HR, where is he charging? Um, health reimbursement agreement currently, um, well, for quite some time, I don't know when it began, but the, um, to assist with the high deductible, the city has reimbursed a portion of that. Um, right now, I think it's five hundred dollars for the employee and five, up to a thousand for the family, their family card. Um, we had it set at thirty-two thousand, it has been reduced to twenty-five thousand, it, yeah. Okay, this will be in the book there.
So regarding the chamber, we, um, we did actually have a conversation today about, um, developing an MOU, because I know the chamber has an MOU or MOA, whatever it's called, um, regarding marketing the Cordova Center, but there isn't uh, a written agreement talking about the chamber serving as a destination marketing organization for the city. So that's what I think would benefit going forward, and there could be a number in there memorialized, or you know, put in writing with also benchmarks for for things that the chamber is going to do in return, and how does it monitor, um, success and how those funds are being used, so that's something I think that would be great to work on in twenty-six, yeah. Um, okay, so.
Ski Hill?
Yes.
Ski Hill loves all of us, um, in the school. I really want to talk about in-kind, we rely on in-kind. We're both fiscal and haven't, Ski Hill, we are a conjunct movement, Ski Hill, there are things that we cannot reduce that. Building maintenance is one of them. Which has grown substantially, we've lived in that five years.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Kinsman.
Uh, and just forgive me if I, I'm just, again remotely, is there anyone representing the Ski Hill in the audience right now?
That's not a fair speak.
It's not, no, not specifically.
And they were, they were invited, we, I invited all.
I I didn't hear anyone speak in favor of the, as far as from their boards or anything, and so that's, for me, that's my answer. No, I mean, if we can, if there's other in-kind things that we're able to cut, then I'd be in favor of that. And I don't take that lightly for my family who loves to ski. But I also want to get the message across to the boards and everyone, sing for your supper.
I think the ten thousand is.
Yeah, that's, that's not much.
That's, yeah, that, I think the in-kind are necessary, we leave the end alone.
Yeah.
I'm probably contracted, the ten thousand, yeah. I'm not interested in holding any agency hostage. Overfunded in money.
Yeah.
And remember, am I wrong, the insurance wasn't required, we chose, we choose to pay the insurance, we have to pay it.
Uh, I think in the end it was required. Yeah, then we, I went, I talked to Mr. Gianni, and we looked into where he purchased it. So they buy it, it is partial, they, we are named in their insurance, but it also covers them. It's not just the city, because we have our own liability insurance there, and, um, yeah, they are getting the best deal they knew, their broker happens to be the same as ours, so it was an easy conversation.
I know, you didn't go back to town, because I came in on the float.
Yeah, so. You were coming.
Other comments to talk, so are folks comfortable with what's been proposed?
I don't think anybody's comfortable with it, right? Well, I think it's moving forward, we need to go forward with it.
So are we going to discuss the school, or are we just moving forward with that?
That's what I'm asking, I know people want to.
I I don't know that I can speak to the school, just that I I know that we're operating at the school, um, short-staffed in both buildings, and, um, it's a challenge to, you know, meet the mandates of test scores and such, when you don't have a dedicated math teacher, you know, um, so. I'm not in favor of it, but I see the necessity here.
Remind me, what do they do their budget?
It's, they're six months at their way to, they're, they're good for your July, did you?
Yeah, that makes it a little tough, too.
It's very good. And there, there's an, another factor that has just been thrown out, and I don't know if this is going to impact the school or not, but, um, federal funding for IDEA and special needs students has been completely cut at the federal level. And I don't know if that's going to be a follow-through, because it's also law, so I don't know that you can do that, but, um, that, um, is a substantial amount of money that goes to our special needs students.
I think reacting on that is if we were going to pull anything from a permanent fund, I would forward for this school funding, but.
Well, don't forget that we have a one point five million dollar grant match. Well, don't forget that we have a one point five million dollar grant match.
Yeah, so I don't, don't think we can do that.
And we have some, we have that one big other, other thing.
Which is not in operating.
Yes, it's not here. It's not in operating. We pulled the grant matches out of operating last year and we chose to move forward in that same direction. So.
We pulled them out of the permanent fund. We, she's, she might be reading the expenses from.
To general fund.
To general, got it, got it.
And we have been successful in getting some funding for it and, um, or Matt, increased match money. So I'm waiting to find out the tool, which will be super. But we still have.
Right.
Okay. Um, well, so far I'm hearing that we, that folks are agreeing with what's proposed, agreeing, um, sort of reluctantly, um, with what's been proposed and so basically that means that we're asking the city manager and the finance director, so we're underlining between two hundred and seventy and two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of additional cuts still. Is my understanding of where this stands?
And hopefully when we revisit general fund, next time we'll have a better sense of satisfaction. So I would be hopeful. We'll be leaving that day, right? We meet on the twenty ninth?
Yeah.
So.
They have till the end of the month technically. So I mean, you could foresee a substantial amount in the last few days, but we'll have a good picture, right?
Well, no, the banks are in for now. By the actual date, right? The banks.
My biggest, one question, um, what, how much do we have in permanent fund? Seven million?
Over seven.
Is it over seven though?
Yeah, yeah. Is that, depending on what's happening?
I can call up and give you a solid number around. About approximately seven million? And is that in, um, some kind of interest-bearing investment?
Yes.
It is, yeah, they're purchasing investments, unlike the animal account. It's not liquid.
Not very liquid, easy to get to. What costs us when we get to, you know, because they have the same investments and transaction fees and.
That's true. But it, it, it's in that bucket.
Do we have money in an account that is a little bit more liquid?
Yes.
And how much is in that? More or less.
One, one point five.
No, that's like more than that. So, so this gives back to our cash flow, cat money, like the banks are just going to get complimented really quick. So there is two point five million left of that. Because we.
A bunch of amendments that we had recently passed, aid into the three million that was borrowed from the, sorry, I told you.
Nope, you're, okay.
Borrowed from the permanent fund for the harbor and then paid back to the permanent fund, but left for general fund.
Right.
For cash flow. So then we had the amendments, so it's about two point five million now. So just, yeah, um, and at some point we do have to figure out where the Second Street match is coming from, if it's coming from that or another grab from the permanent fund, um.
But we also had to transfer a million dollars into, to make, to use it for cash flow.
Of that.
Oh, yeah. So we transferred it. We got through June and Au, June, July and August. We put two point five back and we left five because we have been cut. We have the, let's get something. So we had the increase of property tax so that, so we are a million dollars cut, a little over a million. So the property tax covered part of that.
Lower in our revenue.
Yes. And then we had the leave of five hundred thousand in the twenty-five. So those same cuts are coming forward in twenty-six.
And so it'll be nice to have that sitting there or some of it for our June, July, August vote.
We have to. That's our deal.
That's our new thing.
That's our deal is the two point five million is for cash flow. We are not out of that situation at this point. There is other funds in there. For instance, we move money over there when we have money coming in in our account, at the sweep account gets high, we push it over to Anlet because it makes really good interest and then we pull it back out. We are a professional money transferer at this point.
That's someone so shady.
Oh, just making sure that we.
We send it in Jersey every time. Cheryl has to explain it to us, or she does.
So yes, we do have more of a. Small.
Questions? For the manager and the finance director? All right, I'm hearing that we are moving forward, moving forward with the, yeah, outlines of, um, cuts that you proposed. And it's like, we're asking you if we'll keep working and finding, um, ways to identify some savings for the rest of the round deficit that we still have for twenty-six.
And pending agenda of the regular, when we discuss future work sessions, because Arvin may be having one next Thursday, or that's up in the air?
That's up in the air.
Okay, pending agenda of the regular roll call.
So, recessing, adjourning the work session and taking a break before regularly?
Well, we have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
Right, right, right.
But please do, with no objection, adjourn the work.
Okay, uh, no objection during session. And let's, um, call to order, they see council public hearing about October fifteen at six fifty-one and the clerk, Andy Holbrooke.
Going for the public hearing, um, Mayor Smith, here. Deborah Adams?
Here.
Aaron Hanson?
Here.
Casey Kinsman?
Here.
Brad Mendelson is absent. Randy Rainey?
Here.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Dave Zastro?
Here.
At the Coram on Council.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're now in session for a public hearing regarding ordinance one, two, three, five, and ordinance of the council and city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the transfer of three hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixty cents from the general reserve fund, which is the, which we refer to as the permanent fund, to the Refuge Enterprise Fund for the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Peterbilt five twenty dumpster truck. Does anybody want to comment on this transfer?
On the purchase? Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, is this three hundred eighty-five, five hundred and one coming out of the two point five million that's liquid or is coming out of the seven million that is? And what are the, um, costs of pulling that money out? Aside from it being three eighty-five?
So I can't, I can't answer what it costs to pull it out. It depends on the market. Like if they're selling for a loss, if they're gaining for a loss, I don't know what the transaction fee is. I, I guess at this point, I'm unsure if we can float that through the two point five that is already out. I think that is a decision that we will have to make a little later in life. Um, but what I will say, if we don't order this truck down, we will not have it for next summer and we're going to be lucky to have it by June. So this is why this is, you know, we're moving forward now. Um, I think we're still having that. After the budget is set, we'll have a little more realistic view of whether we can book that out with two point five or not. And then have refuge big things to the general.
Yeah, I, I want to be clear, I'm not objecting to the purchase, it's just how it's going to be purchased is all.
Other questions? Any comment from the public, uh, purchase of a new dumpster?
There will be another public hearing for this at second reading. We also will leave seven votes at second reading. That's how, that works for transferring from department fund.
No questions, Councilmember Kinsman? Just going to try to make sure.
Nope, that's, that answered what Susan said. I was a little confused why I had a public hearing here and then we're going to have another public hearing, but.
It requires one, uh, introduction and a final approval.
Nope, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Adjourn it or recess or adjourn? I don't know.
Were you trying to wait for, to turn to fifty-five and then we felt like we could adjourn it?
I mean.
There's a lot of people here.
Why don't we recess? Yeah, but let's recess for five minutes and people can get the break of the year.
Only because I never know what to do with it. One week recess.
Right.
But, believe it.
But I also say this.
He said.
Right, there.
God, God's not liking me right now. Yeah. Sorry.
I think it's going to be.
Yeah, and they. And you said, they're not, they're not.
You know what I want? I fought for that.
When I look at that one, it's not. Just have a little coffee. I have one. And did you notice there's no money to feed you guys? I'm sorry.
We cut that.
Bring your own.
Are we ready?
We have to come out there and have a recess.
Okay, so, so what do you like? Coming back from our recess?
Yeah.
And any further comments after the public hearing? Um, my, my consensus, so I'll go ahead and adjourn the public hearing. And we will call the meeting to order.
Yeah.
Uh, the regular city council meeting of October fifteenth, seven P M, um, and will you join me in the federal race?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice as one.
A roll call. One more, Congress. Mayor Smith?
Here. Still here.
Deborah Adams?
Here.
Aaron Hanson?
Here.
Casey Kinsman?
Here.
No, Mike Mendelson yet. We may come on later. Wendy Rainey, here. Kathy Sherman is absent. Dave Zastro?
Here.
Sformon Council, great.
Okay, um, so we've got the regular agenda before us. Are there any conditions, amendments? There is no objection. Will we consider that approved? Um, any disclosures of, or, uh, any disclosures of conflicts of interest or exportation of patient, uh, any agenda items for tonight's meeting? See you in the map. Communications buying petitions from visitors. We don't have any guest speakers scheduled, um, so we can move to audience comments. If anybody would like to come forward and comment on items that are on the agenda and we would like to, we'll be keeping it to three minutes per speaker, but if somebody wants to come forward, then. Get it going.
Hello?
Hey.
I am Robert Masalini of no official address, but Harvey Van Cordova. None of us out there have official addresses yet, but I'm here tonight to speak about my thoughts on the Chamber of Commerce and if you would hear them, please. I brought my letter that I wrote.
So technically not on the agenda. I mean, we did just have the work session.
We have a. She has a report in there.
Oh, yeah, that's a report. Okay, and she just have that, that report in there. Go ahead, thank you.
All right. It has been brought to my attention that the Chamber of Commerce is under the consideration of reallocation or defunding. As a lifelong Cordovan, born here forty-two years ago, I'd humbly ask the council to hear my thoughts on this. My family, all growing up, depended on commercial fishing and the salmon that it brought to my dad. My family, all growing up, depended on commercial fishing and the salmon that it brought to my dad's canard, Eac Backing. In adulthood, I became a commercial fisherman, but mainly because of health reasons, had to look elsewhere with more land-based ventures. Last winter, I decided to start my own business and become a guide for people that want to come and experience one of Cordoba's most sustainable and untapped resources, the wilderness and unmatched beauty of our area. I needed a lot of help getting started. I approached the Chamber of Commerce with my idea of becoming an entrepreneur guy. I feel like the Chamber saw the guiding idea as I did. Economic diversification or a chance to pull in outside capital, which also diversifies industry in our town. The Chamber found me trained to become a local entrepreneur of regenerative tourism. Resources were immediately on hand and I was helped graciously and without hesitation when I needed it. When I became Chamber member, my business was advertised through them, which helped business greatly. It reminded me of when I was quill netted and got better nets and started catching more fish. As a local entrepreneur, the Chamber of Commerce is my version of Better Nets. Cordoba is changing as a town. Sand runs and fish politics are becoming different and some of these changes hurt us as a community. Some of my most trusted elders agree. Cordoba needs diversification of industry to see us into the future and it is my experience and my belief that the Chamber of Commerce is our Better Nets to help us with that. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Chamber of Commerce for what it does and for helping me as a local businessperson and as a guide. I truly depended on it. Thank you, Council, for hearing me tonight.
Thanks, guys.
Robert.
Hi, all. Ryan Schutze, two hundred first Street, Cordoba. I'm here to speak in opposition of the proposal which would allow for the disposal of the city T dock. Uh, though I sit on the harbor commission, I'm here as a harbor user and vessel owner. Our harbor commission vote is already on the record. The T dock's a facility that's used quite often for the loading of equipment and freight for the larger vessels, not only in our Cordoba fleet, but the seasonal fleet as well. As the owner of an eighty-six foot boat, I can say there's not many options for larger boats in getting docked side. On the occasion that there's a barge of ocean dock, the T dock becomes critical for vessels constrained at length or draft. The drag down float in the harbor basin is wonderful, but does have many limitations. I'm thankful that Ken Ju wants to invest in Cordoba and grow the scope and impact of their operations. That's something I believe Council wants as well. I hope that we can think creatively to find a solution to benefits Cordoba as a whole without privatizing such a crucial public access point. To lose three hundred feet public dock is something we just can't afford if we're in fact committed to being working waterfront. Thank you.
Chris Calado, four oh one, Row Row. Um, speaking, we have a Tri-End Seafood in the opposition of the sale of the T dock to Ken Ju. Or to anybody else. Um, basically, we have a great working relationship with Ken Ju, but we are heavily dependent on that dock for our large tenders. Um, moving supplies and various other things and a lot of our fleet, the majority of our fleet is dependent on it also. Um, just wanted to get it on record, our opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison at two two zero three Park Big Road. I am also here to speak in opposition to the sale of the T dock. Um, it is public infrastructure exused by a lot of businesses in town and echo earlier comments. Um, myself and the rest of the town who's in full support of Ken Ju's expanding their business, but selling public infrastructure that supports multiple businesses in favor of one, um, doesn't seem like good city.
True. Thank you. Thank you.
Three couple one hundred, Jensen Dray, uh, manager of Corby Electric, speaking on both behalf of Corby Electric and um, the family and our investments in this community. Um, speaking to, uh, the budget, the report and the packet, I'm very strongly opposed to this kind of a cut to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we've got a lot of opportunities on the horizon and those take promotion. We have new businesses that, uh, we just hosted a hundred and forty, um, percent attendee conference in Corby Louis before last. Those event events don't help with the direct support of the Chamber. Our festivals, diversification of our economy, uh, I could just point to numerous ways that the Chamber supports the community in ways that it creates pretty catastrophic ripples if we start going to ban now. Uh, speaking to the T dock, we've had a business approach this council and try to develop at their own cost an alternative dock. And, uh, they've got quite a few roadblocks. And if we're gonna grow and diversify our economy, we're gonna have to make some compromises. We're gonna have to be willing to develop some infrastructure. Um, you know, who, who else is gonna promote Cordoba? When's the last time anyone's talked to the co-founder? They could put in billions of dollars worth of vessels. Air support, Cordoba has almost unprecedented infrastructure. We need advocacy and we need to grow our business. If we keep cutting, we need, we need a way in our base economy to support our schools and our seaport industry struggling right now. They need support too, not more expensive. So I feel like we're, um, cutting our way into a downward spiral at a time when the Chamber, in particular, I don't feel like the Council fully appreciates, um, the advocacy and the exposure, uh, that they bring to Cordoba. So I'd encourage you to look at other alternatives, look at a smaller cut to the Chamber and other cuts elsewhere. Um, but also take a good look at next year's revenues. We do have some, hopefully, raw fish tax will come through. I think we're on a bit of a bump. I know Corby Electric has a business opportunity that's coming up there that are generating sale tax revenues. So, um, really, uh, with this courage, making this kind of catastrophic sudden cut to our Chamber in time to get re-supported. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Colin Bronson, one ten Cabin Ridge. I am here to speak on behalf of Mid-Village of Eac and the Shepherd Point Road and Port Complex Project. Uh, just wanted to let you know that I'm here, available for questions. Should it come up during your voice vote and I just wanted to say thank you for considering it and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Ian. Uh, Steven Phillips, one hundred and Daniel, I'm a factory for the Department. Um, I just wanna speak to nine echo, which is my report that I submitted to you guys. Um, just to clarify a couple of things. At the time of the report, um, I had some erroneous information. All four of our generators are fully active and online and do work. Um, and staff have actually been training on hooking them up. So that's a little separate. Um, other than that, uh, I do appreciate the hard decision you have in front of you, uh, budget. Um, and then I'll be available for any other questions on the report when it comes up. Thank you.
Audience comments?
Hi, everyone. Tommy Sheridan, six ten Spur Street. Um, I'm just here to, to speak to you all, um, to say that I support city staff. Um, and the city council with all the decisions that you'll need to make this, this winter with budgets. It's not, it's not an easy situation and there will be some more difficult decisions to be made. Um, I would like to comment, um, in support of Councilmember Kinsman's discussion earlier this evening about exploring opportunities to, um, develop an M L U with the Chamber of Commerce to potentially utilize in a sustainable way, um, public accommodations taxes in the future. However, I just wanna echo some of the concerns about the proposed cuts to the Chamber's budget. Um, seventy thousand dollars at this time. My concern is that you would be left with an empty building, um, and with, without, um, a chamber to deliver on all of the services and benefits that, um, are included in our report from page thirteen through fifteen. So, um, just really concerned that, um, you know, we would, we would see the really elimination of the Chamber with, with the cut of that magnitude. Thank you.
Any other audience comments about agenda items? Right, um, we also have chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions, but I don't see one from the school board or medical center. Um, so that brings us to the consent calendar. I will give the roll on the consent calendar. Um, Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
Michael Sanders absent. Karen Hansen.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Deborah Adams.
Yes.
Dave Zastro.
Yes.
The consent calendar is over. Okay, um, in the consent calendar, so those are approved. We don't have any considerations of bids, uh, proposals or contracts. We have, um, next reports of officers. I did not have a written report this time. Um. There are a couple of things that I am making a list to follow up on, things that we just talked about. We, in the work session, we were talking about the shared business fish tax and the need to, um, reinforce the message to the state that they should be, that the payment should be more timely and see if we can't get any kind of explanation about how they calculated. So that's something to follow up with the delegation during session. And, um, we do have a fisheries advisory committee meeting happening tomorrow. Um, I'll be participating and, and we'll bring back to what we talk about there. I, I was hearing in the discussion from the October first work session where folks were talking about um, what kind of, are there any incentives? Are there things that we could do to encourage folks to, um, get more fish delivered here in town? Could we land more fish in Cordoba and increase our share of shared business fish tax? Um. And so I know that's something I would like to talk about to the group tomorrow and see what we can do and, um, yeah, see if there's maybe the possibility of a meeting we could hold later this winter where we could invite some of the processor to come together and, um, and have a high level discussion about what that would take. So that's something I'm thinking about. Um, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. Folks have questions for me? What's going on? Um. And if not, we can go to city manager. Her report.
If, um, you mean, um, um, the question, oh, that's not true. I do wanna clarify the motion for lands sales. I just wanna make sure everybody kinda understands that little paragraph I have in here. So a while back, um, there was a little bit of confusion on whether something was out for lease or purchase or just purchase. So we were talking about, um, making sure it's clear, like, the motion typically is to put out for lease or purchase. And typically, it goes out for purchase. So I think it's important that if we say lease, we say purchase, or we say both, or lease or purchase.
Right, so there's the need.
Yeah, you say lease or purchase, that means you wanna lease.
Or purchase.
Yeah.
But not lease to purchase. I mean, I'm just saying that, yeah.
Yes, a lease to purchase is a purchase. Just done in a different kind of contract, but a lease is where it is not ever being sold by us. So we just wanted to clarify that and you'll see in the motions in the lands sales that that is included in there asking for clear, to be clear on what council's intentions are with our lease. Make sense?
Makes sense.
All right.
Did you want to, it says, full update at the meeting?
Yeah, cool.
Hi, everyone. Uh, the full update is that Petersons did start this week with getting into, in fact, quite a bit of rain, which affects the water cable. Um, at the pool, so they're spending, they're spending a lot of time pumping the pool out, so the pool's filling up from the bottom. Uh, um, through the water. So when it stops raining a little bit, um, they have marked it off and I think they did cut into the liner, so, um, I didn't, usually took a look at it though yet, um, but I, I can see where they have it, um, marked off, so hopefully we'll continue with progress.
I, Madam Mayor, I read in your report that the earliest, uh, liner people can come, it is in November.
Yes, yes. I signed, um, our contract about a month ago, uh, for them to, to secure them coming in. Um, but that just meant we were in line. But, so.
So best case scenario is December?
Um. Hate to give any kind of, I know, um, we, I do want everyone to be aware that, um, we will be running a few lifeguard courses, um, once we get it up and running. Um, we've had a significant number of people lapse on their lifeguarding. Um, so we'll run some of that and make sure we're, um, compliant and, and then we'll start it up again. So, yeah.
Any other questions for the manager? Yeah, so we've got a lot of, um, department reports, which is super helpful, always helpful, just to have that level of detail because I see we don't see what you do every day, so we're going to get some of that information through these reports. So thank you for taking the time to put those together.
And I'm just saying, while, while all these people are here, that the boards and permissions ad is in here and it's up all around town and you all have so much respect for these guys and how hard their work is. Take your turn, enjoy the board or commission, and then that'll lead to you being up here someday. Right?
I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to skip over the quick reports.
Sorry, that was it. And then also, you guys can all think about A M L conference in December. I sent an email and you can look at, uh, the draft agenda that they have. I think if you register before November fourteenth, it would be the early bird feed. So anything we can do to keep it cheaper, there's also a stipend that, uh, A M L has that we can apply for if anybody wants to attend, so think about it. Um, and who knows where council's travel budget might be in the future, so this might be the last chance you get to vote A M L. And I know that that's really a great thing Wendy has been and she comes back with all kinds of great new information. Sure, the mayor is considering it also. That is all I have. Okay. All right, so now we can just, uh, stack quarterly reports. On the list, is, folks, any questions about any of these reports or? Comments? Staff? Yes.
Steven Phillips' report for the remarks that, uh, third quarter, they had the highest call line in three years. Which is pretty, pretty amazing, yeah. With the staff you have and putting things together, that's, that's something to note. Terrible, but a couple of those called hundred and one calls for, for stadium emergency. It's pretty fantastic, okay.
That recognition. Thanks for handling it with such competency and, uh.
Madam Mayor, I have one question that I maybe was about, there was. Madam Mayor, I have one question that maybe was about, there was numbers about the jail. And someone's reported, you know.
It's the police department. So.
How many people in our paper here?
Seven, eight, nine.
Page seven.
Okay, well, my page twenty-nine has a problem.
Am I at the top of page?
Yeah. Yeah. There was something about I'm sorry to pick up time of this. It was something about medical or I will come back to it. Any comments or questions on staff reports? Aye. So we have some correspondence in the party. Yeah, notice from D E C about open comment period for administrative regulations. Which I think is part of the governor's effort to reduce regulations, I think there was some order about reducing fifteen percent of regulations, so I think that's really quite, that's about. Letter from the state assessor with our full twenty twenty-five value determination. A letter that was approved at the last council meeting for, by, from Vice Mayor Kinsman to the board of fish authorities and we generally request. Notice from the alcohol beverage control board, notice about the comment period for administrative regulations, so same thing. And also from the marijuana control board, notice of open comment period for administrative rights, so that's what's in our correspondence. Any comments or questions about those? So ordinances and resolutions, we come to that, ordinance one, two, three, five. Would someone like to offer a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance one, two, three, five, offering the city manager to transfer funds from a permanent fund to purchase a twenty twenty-six Peterbilt five twenty dumpster truck.
Right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance one, two, three, five, to transfer funds to purchase a truck, are there, uh, councilmember Ben Rainey?
Uh, I know, we need to get this started, so. And if we need any.
Simple, yeah, I would agree, and I think the city manager explained that well during our budget discussion. And in the description of the background, we got a little bit of support about these or what they're from.
Yeah, they were amazing, so the name our truck, well, I guess maybe let Kevin tell the story.
We caught him watching.
So they're all here where we have the dumpster truck accident. Luckily, our staff member was fine, but the truck was a complete loss. Put us down to one truck, that truck was currently under maintenance and upgrades at the time, which is why we were using the backup truck. So since we didn't have a truck, Valdez sent us over one of their extra trucks that they have. Didn't charge us for it, all we had to do was pay for the transfer, the transit over here on ferry and back. And so we were able to then have that as backup truck to get us through the fishing season with the processes, we're pushing out a lot of garbage, so we had a small interruption for about a week, week and a half, we've got a little bit of backlog, but then caught right back up, so. Yeah.
That was super helpful.
Quick.
How long did you get that over here before our truck was there?
Our truck went back up.
Pretty close.
Yeah, the timing actually kind of worked out that by the time we got their truck over here, our truck was back in action, but we still use that truck in case something happens, so. And then we sent their truck back on the last ferry. So we had it for probably a few months.
That's a good neighbor.
Yeah.
So additionally, I support this through the permanent fund because that's what the permanent fund is for, if you have any kind of emergency need or need to fill and that's what that money is sitting there for. I know it's difficult to pull money out, there's a cost associated with it, but it's something we recognize why we have it set up the way we do, so I support this.
Comments from other councilmembers?
I have a question about the the interest. You get right, it's, the department's going to pay back the city for this purchase, but that's really money from the city budget anyway.
So this
I'm wondering why charge interest?
That has just been the thought of past councilmembers, that since the money's sitting in an interest-bearing account, we're losing out on that interest and so some of that interest should be made up by the entity that is having the money loan to them.
Okay, but that's, that interest money is money that comes out of that department's budget.
Yes, correct.
And there's a type of
Refuses the enterprise fund, so they, it still comes out of their budget. But the the deal with an enterprise fund is that they're supposed to survive off their revenue and you know, expenses, so yeah, I don't disagree, it's still coming out of the city budgets. That has been the past.
That's been our practice, that's been our practice, it isn't codified, I know.
No.
Yeah, so, but it has been the fact.
I think some of the other logic was, well, if you were going to buy it from somebody else, you'd have.
But the paperwork's a lot easier than selling out the loan app.
I agree.
Although not really, because I need seven yeses for this, or seven ready to prove.
Well, as we've been told, but we need to get this moving. Otherwise, we're not.
Yeah, the the backlog, if if this gets approved tonight, we'll be putting the order in tomorrow and that will be pushing it to be getting it by around May, June, so you know, if we get the order now, we'll just be making it in time for the fishing season next year, we're still going to be limping along with one truck through the winter, but there's a lot less dumpsters throughout the winter. Issues come up, we have contingency plans, but we can't survive without two trucks during the fishing season.
Any comments online, councilmember Kinsman?
Yes, first and foremost, I just want to publicly have out there, thank you to Valdez and their effort, and I would put it maybe impending agenda to just kind of officially thank them in some kind of resolution. Great help and it's good to have a neighbor, no matter how far away they are. And who knows, we may, even if we put this order in, still need some of their assistance at the beginning of next summer, so I think that'll go a long way. If we're, if we're talking about the the cost to run an enterprise, if we have the, I think most recently, we have the police department who went through a leasing agency to get their new trucks. And there's, there's various interest rates associated with that, I'm absolutely in favor of an interest rate for for this dumpster truck, and if that means the enterprise needs to charge more to cover the interest, it's also ultimately the the benefit of of our permanent fund, that's where it's going, and that's where this money will go, so. That's my two cents on that, I know that's in the next resolution.
Mayor Smith, my cat's joined to make it.
Okay. Councilmember Mickelson, we, I guess you know where we are, we're considering ordinance one, two, three, five, do you have any comments? Or a question about?
Yeah, hey, I I just got out of another meeting, I'm driving a ferry, so I apologize if you can't hear me. The Kodiak view, okay? I would like to also thank Valdez for how much they've helped us in this situation and you know, I definitely support her putting interest on this because, you know, these are our price funds, we can't take money out of, even if we wanted to, so I I think with the budget situation with the city, that is something we can do, and I think we need to raise rates a little bit to cover that. Well, I realize that that would pain for everybody or can, compared to some of the other agents we're having, I think, I think it's more difficult, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for chiming in, okay. Anybody else? Any comments? All right, so this is a voice vote, all those in favor of adopting ordinance one, two, three, five, please signify by saying aye.
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 Welcome, any opposed, same sign? Name, which passes. Resolution, so we come to resolution ten twenty-five, twenty-six. And yeah, that's on page thirty-eight, I would entertain motion.
I move to approve a sole source contract with BSI Equipment LLC to purchase a twenty twenty-six Peterbilt five twenty dumpster truck.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to, yeah, to approve a sole source contract for the dumpster truck, councilmember Ringo. Councilmember Adams.
Did a
Any other comments? Any else online, councilmember Kinsman or Mickelson?
Yes, councilman Kinsman here, just curious, at what point do we establish an interest rate associated with this? I want to make sure we have that conversation to get the council's consensus on it.
That was nice. So it was, it's currently built into the previous ordinance at three percent. So at the second reading, you could either pass it as is at three percent, or you could amend it to adjust the percentage within the ordinance. But that would be at the second reading of the E ordinance.
Okay, no, that's perfect, I was reading it, making sure that this resolution incorporated at three percent, and I'm fine, so, thank you.
The, just for clarity, this resolution you're voting on now doesn't have any mention of the interest rate, it's only tied to the previous item which was the ordinance.
Yes, I am realizing that as you say that it was tied to the ordinance, so thank you.
All right, here in further discussion, let's take a voice vote, so all those in favor of resolution ten dash two five dash two six, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, same sign?
Yeah, it's kind of unbudgeted money, I should probably do a roll call for it, yeah, does anybody come on? I'm going to do a roll call for resolution ten twenty-five, twenty-six. Kathy Sherman is absent. Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Dave Zastro?
Yes.
Mike Mickelson?
Yeah.
Aaron Hanson?
Yes.
Wendy Rainey?
Yes.
Roger Care Sixer? Right. On the way. On the way.
Okay, well, unfinished business, that brings us to new and miscellaneous business, so we got, I guess we're bringing up again, council action on disposal and method of disposal of the C E T dock. Located on a portion of A T S two twenty, a portion of block eight tide land development park. And a portion of block one, block seven A tide land development park. So, does anyone want to put forward a motion? Which needs to be in the affirmative, it can be for the purpose of dissection?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to dispose of a portion of A T S two twenty, a portion of block eight tide water development park and a portion of block one, block seven A tide water development park approximately seventeen thousand three hundred fifty-two square feet in sizes outlined in the Portova municipal code seven point four zero point zero six zero B. Is that suitable?
Bye, and then pick one of the four.
Negotiate an agreement with the party who submitted a letter of interest to lease or purchase the property.
Hey, it's been moved, is there a second?
The purposes of dissection, I said.
Okay. Moved, yeah, moved Adams and seconded Zastro, so councilmember Adams.
I just wanted to put it on the table, I think we need a lot more information and a lot more discussion before we act on any of this.
Councilmember Zastro.
Yeah, thank you, I really appreciate staff's effort, putting the harbor master, providing all the mission requests we last council meeting, that was super helpful, I really appreciate the use of the of the two large docks, the costs, the cost if we were to sell the the T dock to a private owner. Everything they asked for, we got, which I really appreciate. I'm still inclined the the same way I was last meeting, I don't feel comfortable selling this public asset to a private ownership. I recognize Cam two's efforts to try to expand, I think we need to find a way to help them expand in in the different ways that they have suggested in the past, I think we need to help them revisit those other ideas and find a way for them to move forward to do that possible, but I don't believe this is the way for them to do that, I think there's too many conflicts with other users and a loss to the city as well, so I will not be in favor of selling this already sale, the two thousand.
Thank you, any comments from other councilmembers? Or folks online, councilmember Mickelson or Kinsman?
I have lots, Mike.
Oh. Okay.
I'd like to go back to previous discussions and with other lots. The city's not in a position to lose any more real estate within the harbor. And it's too much of a community asset to support, I will follow suit with Dave on, we need to, they they have access to significant amounts of water drunk and whatever the the roadblocks that were put in place to prevent them from investing in the infrastructure in Portova isn't going to be beneficial. They're a huge part of the fishing community and bring so much, and I feel like there needs to be more of that effort to help them succeed instead of holding it back. And I think it would be a disservice to the community and everybody else to remove the infrastructure that is in place for the fleet in its entirety.
Madam Mayor, I would speak in favor of, as councilman Hanson has said, that to remove barriers for Cam two or any other business that wants to grow and develop and to go back to some previous discussions and offers that they have made in the past, and that was before I was councilmember. But I'd like to revisit those, I think, as was stated earlier tonight by audience comment that, you know, selling a city asset for the benefit of one business at the expense of others. I think that's a a responsible way for for us to behave. So I'm not going to support selling the diva.
Other any comments?
Excuse me, I think I have one more comment, and that is that I really do think that we need to encourage year-round fish processing, and that's what Cam two is proposing as well, and I'm very much in support of that, so I I just wanted to really make that clear, so thank you for that effort.
Yeah, if I might, Madam Mayor. Yeah, if I might, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
Um, this, I want to say has been, I mean, my whole, so three years, three years, Cam two essentially has been trying, begging, offering to expand their facility to have access to water. And it's not a secret. You can ask them, they'll tell you. They first started with dredging just outside of, you know, that, and I don't know the official names, but essentially right behind their facility now, they offered a dredge. Complete and utter chaos broke out and ensued. The, that was the next worst thing that could ever happen to our community. Then they went for the North Phil one. Oh, that, that trumped that. You know, they have, now they've really done it. They are out there, there. How dare they? And here we are at the T dock. Okay, well, we support you, Cam two, in theory, but we actually don't support you. Here's three examples of the community, and this isn't just city council, and I want that to be clear. This is the community come together. So the community, I just ask you, do we actually support Cam two or do we not? They're an entity as we're facing raising revenue for these deficits that we have. And here we are, a million dollars. Even if that's in the cell and we can negotiate what a lease is, that gets to look like and we have a lot more leeway in that. And we get to have and have stipulations on access and what that looks like when we lease this piece of city infrastructure out. We get to have those, we get to have a say in those parameters. Now, of course, they can come back and say that's too restrictive and we don't want that. But I just want to highlight us saying we support Cam two in one vein and then we actually really don't because here's three examples where we don't support Cam two. So, that's my final.
And, and then Kevin, I just will make sure, but the breakwater fill lot is out for the lease portion of that. And then on the first November meeting, that will come forward and there are other proposals to purchase that lot. Okay, so there, the breakwater fill lot is still?
Is still in process.
Right.
We, we, we did have that. This is where the miscommunication came where we didn't know that the lease was also. So that went out for lease, it closes on the twentieth and that will be open, I'm sorry, will be on the meeting in the first November. And so that includes the purchase to buy and then whatever, we get back the leases. Yeah. So that is still moving forward.
Councilmember Astro.
Just a question, and you, I, I know you were here at that time when there was a request to access the back of their facility outside the harbor. And where was the city's role in that?
I can't let Kevin, we talked about it, all that, and he said it was, so Kevin was, I mean, maybe what occurred during that process.
So in twenty-three, Cam two came to us to discuss, um, dredging or excavating, uh, portions of the tide land outside the, uh, harbor to access their property. They wanted to build a dock along their property and then have a channel that they, so they could reach it. And so part of that was going to require them going through a core, army corps permitting process. Um, and part of that permitting process is they needed to show we do support. And the way that we determined to be able to show them community support, at least through the council, was for them to go through the land disposal process. And as part of that passed a resolution, um, supporting the, uh, concept. And that then we would negotiate a lease with them for the dock space that they wanted to construct, uh, contingent on the approval of their permitting to do the channel.
So the channel would be, that would be a city, uh, responsibility, just the dock system?
No, uh, they were going to build the dock themselves, lease the area around the dock.
Right.
And the channel would still stay as part of public land so that the city could benefit potentially from it from the future as well.
Excellent. Excellent. And that, and it was more public sentiment that torpedoed that, that I guess over time is not, I'm assuming.
At the time?
Back to time. Okay.
Right, because the resolution got adopted.
Yeah, yeah. You, the council at the time passed the resolution. It was other outside entities outside of the city that voiced the opposition.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember?
Um, I have to agree with councilman Kinsman and, you know, I propose that we request sealed proposals to lease that property because I think we're at the point where this is number three. They're an important viable part of the community. I think they've made it pretty clear that they're willing to work with other entities on use of that space. And like I said before, we have three options. We have cut staff, we have sell infrastructure, and we have raise taxes. And, you know, a lease option gets us kind of the middle of the road. We're not selling the infrastructure, but we're getting some more out of that benefit and helping the business expand. So I'm in favor of number four, which is request, request sealed proposals to lease that property only, not purchase that property. Moving forward.
She on amendment?
Amendment, yeah.
Would you, are you so inclined to offer a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
So if you're offering an amendment, is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh,
To modify to number four.
Yes, modify the motion to, um,
And lease.
Lease on the property.
Right.
Okay. To dispose of the property, um, by requesting sealed proposals to lease. Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to modify the original motion? Or, I'm sorry, is there any more discussion on the amendment? Should ask.
Right, so what are we talking about? Than the entire T dock being leased out, a portion of it? I mean, how would that work as far as other entities going over to use it?
Um, we've got a
Quick questions.
Request sealed proposals. So somebody could propose part of it.
Well, do we want to have prescriptions, I guess?
In fact, well, maybe approve the amendment first and then start discussing the
Yeah.
Parameters of it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say approve. Vote.
Yeah.
Right. For discussion or for?
Yeah. Right. That's a good phrase.
Uh, I'll second, I'm standing for this.
Well, I think
Well, I'm just
Kinsman already.
Already did a big, yeah, yeah. All right.
I'm just was asking if there's any more discussion on the amendment, but maybe I should say, let's vote on the amendment. So all those in favor of amending the original motion to allow, um, to, to change the disposal method to requesting sealed proposals to lease the property, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
It probably should be a roll call.
It should be a voice vote. Okay, a, a roll call, roll call. I mean, a roll call on the amendment. James Astro?
Yes.
Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Wendy Rainey?
Yes.
Gary Sherman is absent. Aaron Hanson?
Yes.
Mike Mickelson?
Yes.
Then Roger Garrett six, zero.
Okay, so the, uh, original motion has been amended. Um, further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, as I say, I mean, how would, how do we can, again, we, we, my struggle is this is a public asset for a number of entities. If it's leased out and the lease, the, the lease owner has to hold control on that dock, what guarantee would have for other individuals to use it?
Well, or you can modify the
I mean, it sounds like that's given a lease. We're going to say like certain feet we've opened to other users. Uh, I don't know, I don't know. That's, these are more technical questions. I'd like to get a harbor master, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't feel qualified to say.
So, and a portion of it is already leased, isn't it? Isn't there a lease? Already set up with a portion of that?
I don't know. Tell me, yes, tell me, give me answer that. The harbor does, has different methods for leasing.
Right, so we do a dock use agreement. It's only for, for May first to October first. Um, they pay a certain amount per foot to lease it. It's a hundred foot space is what they lease. And then they put his wharfage there for that. But every time they do go down there to do buy fish, on that day, they're being charged that a hundred feet.
And that's, that leases with?
Sixty north or?
Yes, uh, sixty north right now is on T dock, yes.
And then the only established leasing is what you're saying?
For the T dock.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I know this is a place for the question, the time for the question, but, um, when we lease, um, piece of property like this, or is it the city's responsibility to maintain it?
Yeah, I think you build the maintenance cost into the lease rate.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, is that true?
Uh, no.
We should know. It is, if they do, damn specific, but I mean, even the Coast Guard dock is considering to do some maintenance, certain maintenance down there. Not everything.
These prices determine by the way we do fair market value. So we're going to have to have some kind of agreement within the lease on how that's going to work. And, and maybe that would be additional rate or something, but typically a lease amount, if not including a ten percent increase for maintenance.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So the lease right now that exists on the T dock with six degrees north, how long the lease is then? Like May first till, uh, October first. October first, yeah. Okay, so it's a short window. Yeah, just to show one of the deficiencies of them, yeah.
And is it in the fee schedule as to the rate?
Yes, we have a dock lease rate now, yeah. So we're talking about what the potential lease of Cam two is. Potentially. They're looking for a permanent home, this is my point. They would like a permanent home, something that they can expand upon. And I, I, yeah, I'm struggling with this being the way they can do that. If it's just a lease, it's a short one, but he said that. I mean, because right now they can, so right now they can use it like any other processor operation can use it, right? They can lay up against it. The tenders need to be there and they just pay a dock entry like everyone else, like everyone else. Correct.
But that's kind of the point for the request versus sealed, sealed proposals is to see what they're looking for. They'll propose what they're looking for. Are they looking for the whole dock? Are they looking for part of the dock? Do they want, is it year-round? Is it seasonal?
Right.
That's the point for the sealed proposal without having to say, oh, tell us what you want to do in public.
Sure, sure. And I recognize all that. I'm just putting it all out on the table because we're looking for something a little bit more significant. They're trying to, trying to purchase land. North Phil, potentially access to back their facility, but short-term lease doesn't seem to do that. I'm, I'm just putting it all out there.
I didn't say short-term lease though either, so.
Right, right, whatever would make sense for their operation, so. And I also struggle, I want to put that out there, I struggle, I ask me an operator to provide them, say, even kind of a detailed proposal when we're not prepared to accept it. If we, we should know what we're prepared to accept and not to.
And, Madam Mayor, is this, then, when we have a sealed bid situation, um, do we as an entity or as a city, lay out some parameters before we put out an RFP or whatever we want to call it, and then we say, well, we're, we're prepared to lease this, um, the T dock provided that X number of feet is reserved for public use. And I mean, do we, can we set it up that way? Is that how it's done? And then we take your sealed bids?
A typical request for proposal, like in the construction world, yes. So we want this, 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 and this. You tell us how you can do that and what that's going to cost. We have in the past put some parameters on, um, leases or purchase, well, not purchases, leases, where we have said, you know, can't really think of one off the top of my head, but yes, we can do that within the RFP if we choose to. I guess we just, you know, we, we need to understand what that is. So we you know, we would have.
And has council gone into executive sessions with staff to sometimes help write the RFP? Sometimes given, you know, good parameters as to what you will accept, so therefore put it right in the RFP.
I think that would be correct.
We've kind of developed, staff has kind of developed enough, you know, some of their suggestions and then our, the parameters are solidified and put into them. But
That sounds to me like it's something that, um, probably would take a little bit more time to think through some of the details. And I don't know whether we want to do that tonight or whether we want to refer it back to staff and, um, ask staff for a draft RFP for leasing? Or whether you want to have the conversation first?
So we, I don't think we would create a draft RFP, but we could take conditions, not the entire. I mean, it's like a multi-page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, so I recognize, especially for this operator, this might be that interim need that covers what they're trying to do right now. So I totally agree with that. And if we're able to have some kind of input of the RFP, I would be comfortable seal, negotiated or sealed bid for a lease.
Proposals.
Proposal for lease. So, yeah, under those particulars, I would be more comfortable with that.
And how, what, what do you see as steps then as being? I mean, what would you want from the council in terms of direction? How do you want to?
Well, I mean, Tony, and then I guess I would say that you refer it back to us. We develop, you know, I mean, some criteria and some outlines and why, what wouldn't maybe not work and then bring that back. Either in executive session, would we?
So would we refer it back to you or would we tonight say, this is what we want to do?
Yeah. That's a good question.
I think it would be better to vote up this motion and then just know that the next step is Seth bringing you a pro, uh, a draft RFP that you need to comment on. Do you agree?
Draft conditions.
Conditions.
Yes.
The condition for the lease. That's what I meant.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Receive grant from the clerk. Um, the intent is, uh, as I understand it, what I'm hearing is that we would, um, bigly, the council would vote, um, on up or down on the motion. And if it passes, staff will come back with some, um, with an outline of some conditions that could be included in a request for proposals.
And I guess maybe just for clarification, the idea of the conditions aren't to allow public public use and expenses.
Okay, is that clear? Have we, everybody's cool with it? Okay. Um, so, roll call or a voice vote?
We're on. We've approved the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
So now we're either voting up or down the main motion, which is to request sealed proposals to lease the property.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can, I can do a roll call on that.
I just wasn't sure if you thought we needed it or?
Um, just because two, two are on the phone.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so any further discussion folks online? Are you okay with moving ahead with the vote?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to move ahead of the vote. Uh, I would definitely encourage staff to have a couple of options, um, just of, of, of how we could frame it. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy to come in and, and work with them when I get back on Monday. Um, I think, I think we can kind of come up with something that, that might be workable, um, if they would like my help. If not, that's fine too. But, uh, I definitely think if, if we do lease out this, because I, I want this processor to have an opportunity and have some space, but we do need to tie up large vessels. And I think there's a way to do both. So, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the clerk will take a roll call.
Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Yes. Aaron Hanson?
Yes.
Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Dave Astro?
Yes.
Mike Mickelson?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman? You, um, you, Casey Kinsman?
Yeah, me, yes.
Was it a yes?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
We're looking at your new, uh, new, new. Wendy Ray, yes, motion there, six, zero.
Thank you. All right. So, let's move on to council action on disposal, a method of disposal for a portion of ASLS seventy-nine dash two six three. Another land disposal. Getting some practice. Um, I would entertain a motion on ASLS seventy-nine dash two six three. Portion of. Want to? Alter the motion?
Take a stand on it, okay. We're gonna need to pull these up till now. I move uh, that ASLS seventy-nine dash two six three V three, am I right here? We designated on the land, this will be maps for from unavailable to available, a required, requires subdivision and to dispose of a portion of approximately two acres of ASLS seventy-nine dash two six three S outline. Cordillabiscuit called seven point four zero point zero six zero V by the, we're on it, yeah. Uh, negotiate, negotiate agreement with the party who submitted a letter of interest to lease or purchase the property.
Buy, lease or purchase?
Oh, uh, purchase.
Purchase, then answer.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second this. Since you did the hard part, since you did the hard part.
Yeah.
I knew that question.
All right, uh, moved Zastro and seconded Rainey and Councilmember Zastro.
Yes, uh, we've discussed this a little bit already, of the ability for native village of EAC to continue the road construction at the Shepherd Point, and their access point to the Orca Road, and yeah, well, I think what they had planned previously was not very workable, so this gives them the ability to connect the road to the rest of the city road system, so. Yeah, I know, it seems like a new brand of nature, I'll have them move awareness, so I'll be a bit early for them.
It's numbering.
I guess, so, is that, is that, is that here? So this is that little red part that was still marked unavailable, it's inside of that, but this is now making it available and required in subdivision, but they're not doing a subdivision.
Yeah, so you can ask for a portion of it, and that's called a subdivision.
Okay.
It is that whole big section, it's not just that red section, so it's one lot, but there's a line there, um, just to show what was unavailable and what is available. Requires subdivision, but it's just one lot, that's why the revision section.
Okay.
And then asking for a portion of that red unavailable is what, um, they're doing, so.
It's, so it's inside red, red, um.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I know they, I would, for the love of God, have to see it done, so let's.
I, I guess I have a question, um, if this is for sale, um, the purchase, as I've been reading other materials, is that we would charge fair market value for this property?
Um, so there is a portion in our code that does say, or um, other government entities and nonprofits, we can go less than fair market value, but that's a decision that we would need to make if that's um, what they're requesting, or if fair market value is the way that we are gonna go. So when, when, when you go direct negotiation, we, we're gee, with the person who we're talking about, but the product, you know, we're talking about our price, so it looks like how all we're setting comes back to city, came before approval, to actually approve the contract. So that would be the next step, and that would include, in the clueless place.
So the motion is to negotiate, uh, an agreement, and I guess if council wants to give that staff a certain way, that's an option?
That is an option.
But maybe, maybe that doesn't happen, maybe we go into executive session if you want to.
Typically, I'd say in a purchase agreement, when we come back, we're for purposes, we bring the due.
Okay.
If you have a good session, and we have this discussion, and if council has issues, and they, they direct the change, and then come back and go back to the the person, and then we just go back.
Okay. Any? So Zastro and Rainey, um, any other questions online, Councilmember Kinsman or Mickelson?
Seems pretty straightforward.
And I would be remiss if I didn't pay homage to the former council member Baylor in saying that this is, I, I, I can support it, it's a very specific piece of land, but, you know, he would be asking, why aren't we sealed proposals, so.
Thank you for that, recognizing, thanks for the memory.
But this is a very specific piece of property that I think would very much benefit. And this is, this is the use of that land, so, let's get, as counselor, council member Rainey said, for the love of God, let's just get this going, so. I can get behind her.
All right. I am not hearing further discussion, so, but I'll do a roll call anyway, okay, so this is for direct negotiation for a sale. Wendy Ray?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Mike Mickelson?
Yes.
Dan Zander?
Yes.
Motion here, six, zero. Thanks. Thank you. Let's move on, pending agenda. And what was the thing we were getting around?
I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know.
We have work sessions scheduled, was there some, thank you, Balsi, you want a letter, you want to do a card?
Oh.
Resolution, I don't know. I almost said a letter or a card would be more personal. Because how many, where else is someone gonna say, you have a resolution?
Yeah, I would use them up for that, we could give them like the man that's got a ton of stickers. Either we had a sticker, a sticker.
The mayor will do some of it, sure, very.
Maybe Baird Mayor.
Or Nami.
They're helping these a little.
Creative dance.
Yeah, interpretive dance.
The dumpster truck, yeah. Uh, okay, yeah, I'd be happy to hand a letter, send a card.
Okay, well, let me, let me know, I'll help you, I'll buy the card.
Okay. Anything else for pending agenda that we haven't already put on the calendar? We've got several work sessions on there as I won't say placeholders, but I mean, you.
Well, we'll be on the twenty-nine for sure.
Yeah.
We have special meeting next Wednesday.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, hello.
And then work session. Well, I know that's far.
Well, I think I put it at six, since there's not a meeting. Right, I was gonna go two hours if we wanted to, but we did a great job tonight. Keeping it to an hour and fifteen.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Kinsman?
Uh, I just wanna make sure it's not lost on us that what I've brought up, and it sounds like there was some support in uh, a portion of the accommodation surtax being directly tied to uh, the Chamber of Commerce, whatever that conversation is, whatever needs to happen, whatever that amount is, but I think that warrants our attention, so. And I know it's not gonna happen this year, I understand that, like, I, I get it's not happening between now and the, and the new year, but this is a, a good way to make sure it's, doesn't get lost on us.
Well, if he means to add it to the pending agenda, I need a second council member to agree with that. Okay, so, I'll add it to the pending agenda, so it's, we see it all the time. Some kind of percentage of.
Or I think maybe the actual, the actual item or the thing we wanna see happen is an MOU with the Chamber for uh, tourism marketing, and then part of that is specifying some percentage. Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not starting off again.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, told them. If it's okay, ask the G and take the first pass at it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, yeah, good. Money on there. I guess, uh, we should help out with the clerk's efforts to recruit folks for boards and commissions. That's something we can all be leading people for.
I have a couple of letters already, applications, excellent, one for planning, one for short reservation permission.
Great.
Okay. And short reservation has been missing there one person for a while, and that's the person who did kind of apply for that one, so should we apply that before we do all the appointments? I don't know that they've been beating the door down to me, do you?
No, I, I did meet recently.
Who said that?
No.
Okay, good, we're gonna wait, we'll do all the appointments in December.
Okay. All right, uh, well, there's nothing else on pending agenda, then we can move on to audience participation, so anybody in the audience wanna come forward and comment on anything? Any business items of the city, I'm gonna do one.
Brian Sheezy here again, uh, you know, the first year, I just really will appreciate everything Cam too, while Alaska Seafoods does for Cordova, they're a great asset. I, I think everybody wants to see them succeed, and barriers, there's a lot of barriers to building in Cordova in general, and dock front access is really difficult, I'd really encourage the council and the city to look at, you know, as Councilman Kinsman said, there's where it's step three of feels like no's, but I think it might be time to revisit step one or step two again, and really look at all the options and see what might benefit the entire community as a whole. It's hard to stress what having a larger boat means, we don't wanna see larger boats leave Cordova inside our small harbor basin, very difficult to navigate, we lose that dock frontage that gives access to larger boats, and that's gonna really be a big issue down the road for working waterfront, if that's important to the council, I think it's important to keep in mind, so, thanks.
Uh, Bernard, nine thirty, I guess, so, I'm here for, I guess, the ski hill, um, but I, I feel like the, the budget cut for us would be really weak up for the use of our community, you know, I just know what it takes to run out of a year like last year, where we didn't have any snow, we had income, nothing. Um, I really feel like you take the maintenance away from us, and are, are you just gonna suffer? So then I'll move on to the, the T dock, you know, I have a commercial fisherman myself too, I, I tie there all the time, I store my gear on it, or try to come get it from me. I, I don't feel that there's room to kick sixty degree north off of that dock and bring in another, another company, I mean, that's just my personal thoughts on that. I do believe that they do need a way to get an alcohol pipe so they can run a pump, so they can offload their boats, I mean, I think that's their main, their main goal. I don't know how we can work with that as a harbor in the you guys, uh, you know, figure out how to get them, what they need, it's basically, they need to offload their boats faster, so. I'm pretty sure we can figure out how to work with them, but I do know that City Dock is, it's the closest thing to the can, you know, you, you can't go down to the, the field dock, you know, it is, that dock is good, but it's a long trip for the can to work with us. So I, I don't see that dock being used for a, anything what, what we already have it for, so. All I have to say, again.
Hi, I'm Dawson Backer, at five hundred and fifth street, um, I'm a volunteer at the fire department for both the EMS and fire companies. And I'm just here to talk about the, one of the budget challenges that the fire department faces in regards to equipment maintenance and training, um, the rising cost of equipment, training, and maintenance has surpassed the department's current funding capacity. Uh, this is evident in the range of gear, equipment, and apparatuses that are beyond the NFDA service life standards, um, so being a part of the department, I am using my equipment and see, and know that it's not up to the standards um, because of lack of funding, um, so yeah, this just means out adequate funding, my fellow volunteers and I uh, can't be properly outfitted with compliant lifesaving gear. Um, the safety of our firefighters must remain the top priority, um, not just for their sakes, but for the department's operational capability and response reliability that our community depends on, so I just hope that this is continued to be taken into consideration for the fire department, thank you for your time.
You're very service. Any other audience participation? Thanks, everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, council comments. Start at the top this time.
Um, just one comment is that, um, I appreciate all the work that went into the Florida relay report, so thank you, Steph. You know, that takes a great deal of time, so thank you.
Um, I appreciate the argument, um, from the T dock, and I appreciate everybody coming out, um, you know, we're sitting in a hard position trying to look at what to cut and how to bring money in, and um, I think we just need to all be open to different ideas. You know, we're trying to support all the businesses in this town, we're not trying to kick one business out in favor of another business, I think there's ways for everybody to work together on this. Um, but I do appreciate, um, the folks that come out, what I don't appreciate is, um, Facebook rants, so if you have something to say about another topic, I certainly appreciate it a lot more if you'd come to a meeting and, um, discuss it with us, or bring your concerns forward. It's not an easy job sitting in this chair, and uh, I appreciate all of you that have come out tonight, um, whether you talked or not, just that, that you've come out to see how things are going and what things are being said, and um, I do appreciate the butts in the chair, so thank you.
I'm gonna go to the folks online, Councilmember Mickelson? No, Councilmember Kinsman.
The back and forth, one, I'm, after that, I'm very grateful for my Facebook ignorance, I uh, don't subscribe, and I get it just come obje- objectively to these meetings, um, but I can understand the frustration. One thing I wanna point out, based off of the quarterly reports, thank you for our, uh, uh, I would say, our police department and our fire department EMS team, thank you, thank you for all you do, and often doing it with less, thanks for the public comment on your infrastructure, your aging infrastructure. Thank you for still, in, in spite of that, often, it probably feels like volunteering to go out and continue to make our community safe, and we do, we do have a safe community, and that isn't one person who does it, it's several entities and isn't one person who does it, it's several entities and, um, that, there's also a public responsibility behind that too, so, thank you. Um, good conversation with the, with our, we are, I, I'd say today was less revenue and more cutting conversation, so, um, I want to make sure it's known by us as a council, as a community, having a conversation about the chamber, there's differing support on it, but essentially at seventy thousand dollars, we have cut Kathy Renfelt's salary. I mean, we can go back and forth and you could say there's different revenue sources and grants and everything associated with, but for just taking, talking a dollar amount, and I'm not saying good, bad or indifferent, I'm just, I want it to be known what we just cut today at seventy thousand dollars. So, difficult decisions, and that'll bring me into the CAM two and all their proposals, just because we wanna see the whole scope of everything they've done the last few years, does not mean that we can't just go back to their proposal to you know, dredge and cut into, what, you know, once you're told no, as a business, you just keep moving forward, what's the next thing? So that doesn't mean that that door's still open, what I'm trying to highlight is we continue to tell them no, so I'm really grateful for that support, council member Rainey, um, and just moving this conversation forward and as a community, just showing, hey, we, we support you, we actually in, in, in our efforts and what we're trying to do and our votes, we support you, Cam two. So, I'll leave on that.
What was your?
Council member Hanson?
Uh, just wanna thank staff for the reports and you guys have a lot of tough decisions and I really appreciate your time and how it's presented, I really appreciate the community presence and everything that was said, uh, we got a lot of tough decisions to make ahead of us, and it's helpful if you guys are here, thank you. Mike, you said?
Oh. Council member Mickelson?
Thank you, well, I, I'm sorry I'm not there in person, um, I've, I've been here in Kodiak, uh, there was some good news today, the commissioner of fishing game said it's likely we made our king escapement, so we're less likely to have restrictions for our gill net fleet, which should reflect positively in our, uh, city poppers in some following seasons here. Um, I really appreciate all the staff prep, it's, it's really nice to call into a meeting and see so many people that are concerned that, that have come to provide their input, I realize these are issues that are really important to people and as they should be, you know, uh, uh, I'm really really proud to live in a community where, where people, people care and they wanna show up, and, uh, as far as CAM two goes, you know, we, we absolutely need to support these people, they've, they've really brought a lot to this community and I think there's a way to do it, um, where we can, we can maintain things that are important to the fleet and give them an area that, uh, will help them expand and get to the next level in their business, and, um, you know, I, I think we really have some, some budget issues facing us and, um, we, we just need to be keeping conscious of supporting the fishing fleet. Um, there's some more things from UFA that, that have to do with the city and, and I, I hope I could give an update on it to, uh, the council at, at the next meeting if possible, and, um, yeah, once again, thanks to staff and, and, um, I re- I really appreciate everybody working hard on these issues, so thank you.
That's great, that's great news about the king salmon escapement.
Yeah.
Um, council member Zastro?
That's really see. Um, I echo everything everybody else is saying, all the council members absolutely, with staff reports, fantastic, the reports are huge and helpful and track, I'll thank for going and coming, I feel everything with CAM two's operations, I said we've all around several multiple times, and said we really wanna support her operation, especially any operation in town, um, that is as, um, profitable, doing as well and, 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 um, you know, advantage to the community, so I'm really hopeful we can find some kind of solution, and I think going back to previous solutions should not be off the table, hopefully, depending on what their desires are for you know, their permanent need, hopefully, maybe some of those previous solutions are still viable, so I'm hopeful for them. Um. I'm also so grateful to see people, it's super huge, I mean, it's so often we sit and look at an empty room, having people here and commenting is great, and I'm hopeful that people will continue to do that throughout the budget cycle that we're working through, come up with our final budget, it, it means everything to have people in the room and to hear your comments. And just a recognition, um, I think our, our city manager has done a good job of that. As far as getting, as we talked last meeting, uh, with revenue, we, we can't really rely on a lot of the sources we can rely on previously, having to do with state, federal funds. Those just aren't there like they used to be and the future isn't looking very good, so we definitely have to start living more within our meetings, what we can do here locally with what we have, so it's gonna be a tough budget cycle, um, so I think everybody needs to be willing to give a little bit. Alright, bye.
Okay. That, we can adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Yes, dinner, thanks for everyone who came out.
See you guys on the phone. Goodbye.